Six thirty-two, it is June twenty-fourth. This is a next time. This is a voting session of the Westchester Borough Planning Commission. Today is Jason Burl, Alan Burke, Alex Katz, and I myself am Jim Cherry. Are there any announcements other than? Want to do your announcement, you want to wait later, new business roll?
Oh, I'll be in new business.
Hold, hold please, yes. Very good. Any comments from citizens on items not on the agenda? Thank you. We have no reports today. We have all business. We have the May twenty-seventh meeting minutes. Did anybody have any comments or finals or?
Look good to me.
Okay. Okay, so make a motion approve those.
A second.
Second?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. It's easy. Let's see here, Planning Commission, open issues. Okay. We did talk at the work session about the build-to ordinance. Tom Estey, did you have a chance to look at last week's meeting online or anything?
I did not.
Okay, fair enough. We basically were looking just at Town Center to change the build-to line back to a zero and the side yards back to a zero, which were the previous version. So, other than that, we were just gonna kind of keep it nice and simple relative to any other modifications was that.
Perfect, correct.
All right, is that something that we can just make a motion and vote on and?
And then, and then I can draft something and then it'll come back to you.
To review then, okay.
For review.
It's a pretty straightforward, simple one, so.
I see, I guess some of the, I guess it's just that one table maybe that has to change.
It's just the, there's a summary table and the zoning district itself.
Right.
And it's really just the front, build-to line and the side, both going back to the zero that we had, again, looked back at the older old ordinance and that was how it previously existed. The only thing I would want to add for conversation with that, and since you're here, Jason, is do we want to add any language relative to either a percentage or something relative to the build, build-to at the front wall? So, not necessarily does it have to be a hundred percent on that line.
Oh.
But I think we were, I was trying to allow some flexibility there that at least more than half of the building was on that line. But it would allow some relief at doorways, entrances, building corners, some articulation in the building, some planting, some relief at street trees.
But I think that there's no build-to line and it's a setback and the setback zero. So then there's no, you could make whatever you want. You know what I mean? That's just been my opinion after kind of going through the old, when we, the old code thing came up, I think Tom brought it. Come in a, but yes.
There was never really a clarification within that relative to whether it was a hundred percent of the building or ten percent of the building or just.
Yeah, if you have a zero percent, if you have a zero, if you have a zero-foot setback, that means you can put the building on it or not.
On the way.
Or not. So that doesn't really resolve the issue that much.
Well, I guess that was the difference between a setback versus a build-to.
Yeah.
So the build-to says you put it on there and mine is, and that's why I was thinking with this, maybe we say a minimum.
Yeah.
A minimum fifty percent or something, some type of attachment to that line. The goal, I don't wanna, I don't know if we can just write a ten, but the intent here is to reinforce the street. At the same time, provide some relief for the quality of the sidewalk.
You can't write ten, you can say the intent of the setback or this, this build-to is.
Yeah. Do you want to do something as loose as majority or do we want to put something as an actual percentage, like fifty percent or something or?
I want to make sure I understand. My understanding of it's a bit of a build-to line is you must build a front wall on that line.
That is correct.
So if you don't want the entire building in that line, then maybe you say eighty percent. I would feel more comfortable with not a majority, not most, some figure, at least eighty percent.
Okay.
Something like that.
Sure. So I.
But I don't know what the right number is.
Right, right. And I, I think it's, I think that would be where I would want to hear some input. I think it would be more than fifty percent of the building.
Yeah, I'm always gonna say I think it should be a setback line because the zero.
I also built him.
Yeah, because, because economically, most people are gonna go to the line they can go to. So that's gonna take away a good portion of people who want to build and maximize their lot. So they're gonna go to zero. And then other people who feel so inclined, like say Forty-four West is an example, Jack's Corner, you know, they might, if let's just say that was a zero on both sides, that they say, no, I want to make a public square. So now, in that sense, that setback is a nice one because it's really created a nice thing to tell.
Want to pull up the summary table? It would be in this, it should be in material for this meeting.
We just want to allow our articulation.
I want to allow.
Yeah, so instead of trying to, so my concern is that if you have a build-to line, regardless of percentage or anything like that, which is helpful, if you have a build-to line, but someone doesn't want to build to it for a good reason, their, their only choice is to get a variance. You can't ask for a waiver, it's not sure on the sound.
And I don't disagree that the tendency would be to push out as much as possible to, to increase the developable area. But I just wanted to look at the table and see if the other ones were setbacks or build-tos. Yes, that's the current one. So if you want to zoom in, maybe some, and the town center is that center one there. But I was wanting to take a look at some of the other front yards. I wonder if we're, are we, do you think we're sharing our screen?
Yeah, I think we are.
Okay. Side yard, build-to.
Isn't it like eighty percent?
Front yard.
Can't read it, it's kind of small.
Yeah, it's so small.
Can you read it? I mean, lot width minimum, lot area, build-to line, front yard, they're all matching, Jason, matched, side yard minimum. So the other, the others are just.
Yeah, we didn't change the neighborhood conservation districts. It was just for Town Center, which is really where the height overlay district was.
So is there other?
It's, it's right there.
Town Center. So build-to, well, and C has a build-to one.
Right.
Yeah, okay. They're all build-to.
Except for Town.
Except for Town Center.
Wait, wait, wait.
You're on it.
Oh.
And the set matches this. Adjacent set, matches this.
No, that is the build-to, because that's the same thing with build-to for, for the NC, the neighborhood districts.
Yeah.
So that is the, and I honestly have no idea what the answer is.
Well, maybe this sounds crazy, but maybe in, in the town, the center, put minimum front yard setback zero feet. Then, if somebody wants to go back further, they don't have to get a variance.
Yeah, that's what, that's what.
And, and, and I don't know whether, then you could put maximum front yard setback. See, the concept of build-to line might be confusing and I'm not sure whether there's even a definition of build-to line. I, I've said from, I, I don't think you could say build-to line slash.
Sure, because that's where it throws it away.
It doesn't, it doesn't make any sense. So maybe in the town center, just say minimum front yard setback zero feet.
The build-to line slash front yard is a little confusing, but I think it's just they're trying to designate the front yard. It should be front yard comma build-to line instead of side, like side yard comma minimum. It should just be flipped, but, but.
Well, it should be same format as the sides and the rear. So it should say.
It should say.
Rear yard comma.
Yeah, it should say front yard. Yeah, it's the same way, like height comma maximum, right? It's not all, you know, it's the.
And we could say then, rear yard comma minimum and then in there, zero feet. Which puts, which basically puts it on the right-of-way and basically put, allows it up on the property.
Or front yard.
And both as front and side.
Oh, front and side, okay, you said, you said rear, okay.
Yeah, not, not changing the rear.
Yeah.
Jim, sorry, we talked about this last meeting, but what was the impetus of this? Like, what are we, what do you want to encourage that the?
Well, there's been, there's been, I'm just gonna say this, last six large developments. Each one of them was basically were all adjacent to properties that were not consistent with the type of building or relationship to the street that we're looking for. As an example, three thirty Market Street is adjacent to Nudie's. Nudie's setback, there's a parking lot in front of it. So we're asking them on our current zoning, match the existing adjacent. So you look at that and you just kind of throw it away and you say, that's not what we're looking for. One twenty-three Market Street, the building immediately to the east is back thirty feet. It was just obviously thrown away. All right, we look at the Burger King, the immediate adjacent properties are not consistent with a town center. North and south they are, actually north it's more consistent with a town center. South it starts being more consistent with the neighborhood conservation districts.
Right.
All right, so when the developers are coming in and they, they have the option to develop up to a certain area, so they're, they'll typically look at the building envelope, what they have available to develop and, and start there and then maybe start subtracting. But it's like Jason said, it's not, normally you're not going the other way. So what's happened is we've gotten into disagreements relative to where that line might be. What we're trying to do is make something that both the applicant as well as ourselves understand the goal and then can stand on it, has a little more teeth to it. So I think asking them to build to the right-of-way or allowing them to build to the right-of-way. And that's where it gets into the thing. I think the bulk of us were good in Town Center to allow them to build the right-of-way.
But that's the difference, I think. You're requiring to build if you do it to the build-to.
Well, yeah, it's the difference between a build-to and a setback.
You're saying it's zero build-to, that you have to build it?
Well, that's what, that's what.
Or you do the minimum or you do the maximum.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and the thing that always concerns me about that is that, that's great that a vast majority of the street, of the walls and the buildings in the town, in the center of town are at the sidewalk edge. But if you walk around, they're not all, right? So, you know, for example, the, the bank across from, or that like accounting office across from, say, Teka, you know, there's kind of a really cool steps back and, you know, there's, there's a lot of really interesting things. So it's like, it gets, it gets a little, like, you don't want everything up front.
Yeah, and when you're in the smaller.
You want most of it, but not, you know. So, or like, you know, a hotel might want to step back to allow for a drop-off or, or just for people to be able to congregate, you know, coming out. So it's like, it just sort of gets kind of weird.
So we like the idea of coming out and meeting it, but, but the reality of it is if you're consolidating lots and you have a whole block worth and you flatten that out, that's not a very nice block to welcome. And if the whole town turns into just one flat line, we're gonna be very sad later. So the, the goal here was to say, hey, look, we're gonna allow you to build out to that. We encourage that. We, the, the goal for, and I think we talked about it last week, was we don't want cars, parking lots, anything like that in front of a building. So the obvious example of that is if you drive eastward or Market, you're looking at the buildings holding that line, there's a certain point where all of a sudden they step back and there's parking lots in front of the buildings. That's because you drove into West Ocean, right? So all of a sudden that zoning changed and it's quite obvious that, and the town kind of falls apart as a borough and becomes just a dense kind of suburban type of a development. So ours was, we want to encourage and reinforce that. What we're trying to do is get that giant question out of where's the adjacent buildings? And how come this development, this is applicable and now mine, it is not, or whatever. So by making it zero, it takes the question out of it. We want you to build up to the back of the sidewalk, basically. But then, you know, but then that's what I, that's where it goes back to what I was saying is, do we want to say? And that's where Jason says if we change it from build-to to setback, that does allow that. Because the setback just says you have to be behind that and, right? But it doesn't say you have to be on it. Jason's point in Town Center is most likely, so that's fair enough to say, it's probably the highest percentage. I can't see why.
Most people, they're, they want a building, yeah, they want to get units or a restaurant or they're, they're gonna want to maximize the building unless they want to do something different, which then it gives them the opportunity.
Yeah, so I, I, I like that idea that it's just a, a zero or a right-of-way, zero-foot setback. And then, because what I do like about that is if somebody wanted to create, because of all the allowance for the seating areas in front of these restaurants and bars, if it would allow somebody to just have a colonnade and tuck the building face back or something, might actually make for a more interesting and nicer space.
We actually did that in Collingswood, which is a town very much like Westchester, it's a little different, but, and they weren't, they didn't allow sidewalks either, so. So we pulled the building back like three and a half feet, just enough to get a table so you could do two tables along the edges. And then as soon as that got built, they were like, this is so nice. So they put a sidewalk cafe or they did put it in order for us. But before that, you weren't allowed and they said, they wanted to have tables outside, so.
All right, so why don't we call it a setback? And instead of a build-to.
That's what I would do.
That's true, yeah. Alex?
I, I just want to be trying to follow the, the two setback terminology. My fear is still that you're gonna get this consolidation of multiple properties and everybody's gonna flatten their building and then you're just gonna have a.
There is another section in the ordinance that requires, I don't know what it is, thirty-two feet, it should step in.
Yeah, the sound though, you gotta step, or it's, it's in the zoning code too, yeah, that every.
So we can go back and.
Side has to shift, but not a lot.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to compromise what the intent of what you were saying, because I do agree with that. I just worry that you're gonna get, you're gonna continue to get consolidation of properties. So sure, everything's gonna be a flat wall. And it will deter the character of the borough. Alan, silence is scary, but.
That's good, yeah. He's been around a while, he knows what he's doing. The, I think, I think just to clarify, the build-to, the build-to puts it there, the setback allows you to be no more than that, but up to it. So it does, the setback, just that change in terminology does allow more flexibility. Now, what could be the downside of it? If somebody really stepped the building back, but in that, it's just in Town Center, that ground is way too valuable. I see no developer taking that route, I just really don't.
The bigger concern would be, let's say like Eli Khan for Market Street Gym, for Mitch's Gym, he pulls the, he places the building as an example, he puts the building all the way up on the sidewalk, the whole building, right? Now, there's some stuff in the code that's setback a little bit. I think that's where the planning commission say, hey, can we get some relief and pull, like pull back some? Maybe the entrance area pulls back, maybe something, could you, could you help it out here? And then it's a push and pull, no pun intended, with planning commission and applicant to try and get some.
Yeah.
Some, you know, articulation, but.
Sure.
But that's, that's for the big lots. The smaller lots, it's not so, because the next building will kind of move up or back or whatever.
And there, I don't know what's in scope, but can there be any stipulations based on the length of the building that is front-facing? To have stipulations that every.
That could be certain. Something over, whatever it says in the code, right? Like maybe a building that's over sixty feet, a lot that's over sixty feet front-end, it has to have.
Yeah, I think the present is thirty-two, but this is, is south it as well, so.
Part of preserving Town Center is that, you know, there were not buildings that spanned the entire block. And that is sort of what has been transitioning over time, so.
Well, I feel like, so here's my thoughts in here. I think this table is, is one piece of it. The height overlay district is another piece. And within that, there are five or six stipulations that have to be met. I think within that, we add a stipulation that, hey, you, you go that height, you provide relief at street trees, you provide breaks. So that would be, I think, a good spot to add that language as another one of those points. But then we keep this nice and simple and to, to get it, and I think the zero foot setback allows, it allows the developer to max out the property at the same time, which would then in fact reinforce that street. But then, with any good sense or any good sensibilities relative to design, they're gonna want to provide some relief so that the doors don't, the doors can be recessed and that type of stuff.
I mean, I'm on board with this, James.
Well, I think, honestly, I, I feel like what's in place now is serving us well. I think it made the Burger King smaller than it would under this change and, which I thought was a good thing. I thought maybe just really bizarre kind of adjacent properties in just sort of a luck of the draw, these were all sort of oddities. And so, I think we're fine the way it is. But I do think, well, this is Tom West's proposal and we have been devoted a lot of time and energy to debating this and discussing it, never really finding something that we all wanted. So I'm in favor of getting past the continued discussions of this issue. I think it's fine the way it is, I don't think we need to do anything. If the majority feels that a change is gonna help and we get bigger buildings out of it.
Sure.
I'm not gonna stand in the way of. I'm not, I just think we got bigger fish to fry. Is this going to stop more Burger King, Mitch's Gyms?
No.
I, I don't think it, I don't think it is, I don't think it's gonna help us. So I'm, I'm a little loose on this, I, I'll support whatever the.
Sure.
Majority opinion is.
Well, that's a fair enough piece, right now you're twenty-five percent. If you count him, it goes down to thirty, up to thirty-three. So my, my question is, I don't think we need to change something just for the sake of changing something.
Right.
However, Smart Growth asked us to look at four specific pieces.
Right.
All right, we've only been successful in modifying one, I'm not sure if that is or is not better. All right, so that.
The height and the.
Well, parking.
Parking, okay, two. So.
And our four, well, we could, we could recommend to council that, we, like Alan's saying, we don't change it.
Yeah, and then we, we could just.
We can come back to it.
We could say that and we just take it, it's gonna be the same thing. We're just taking it case by case, we're making our arguments whether or not we. I think this gives us flexibility to to negotiate, but at the same time, every time we see a submittal, at least within this body, it's a full set of engineering drawings to say preliminary slash final, but they look pretty final. It's a pretty good amount of engineering and design already in place before we see it. And match existing's already been worked out. I think that's where, if Matt Clapp was here.
What I would love to see us require is for them to do, for the applicant to do a streetscape of, if I build this building, this is what, the block to the left, the block to the right and what I'm doing. And when you ask applicants for that, absolutely they'll deliver at next meeting and then you're, you're never better. But some people have done, when they built the hotel, they did it. I thought it was tremendously helpful to get a context as to, you know, and a hotel looked awful. You know what? In the scope of, of that block, it's not so bad, you know? And I think that's what we wound up with, something that is, maybe not architecturally great, but it, the fitting. They paid some attention to it fitting the streetscape. I know, I know, I'm onto a completely different topic here, I guess, but I, I just really feel like, you know, when we asked them for that, they don't, they, they don't have, they don't have to do it and they know they don't have to do it, so.
But this, this goes, I, I think that's a good, and then the thing is, and I was gonna say, I'm not speaking for Matt, but when Matt talked about the height, we were looking for that kind of pencil front end, hey, could you give us a hint here before you spend all this time in engineering it? And let us know whether we agree with your interpretation or not.
Yeah.
And it's almost like we should, and, and that was what my email out to Ramsey earlier this week was. I'm looking at something that reconfigured existing lot lines and we never saw it. And it was a new, new development. And I'm like, how and when does it gets decided that this is okay, just issue a building permit? Or no, this shouldn't go in.
If you're about the Southman like buildings, yeah, that's around the corner from my house. So they, I can't believe that's in. They changed the lot lines? There was three lot, three lots.
There were two lots and a right-of-way, which is even better, you're like that. But so, and they built, they changed it, built perpendicular to both of them. So it was three lots this direction.
Yeah.
And they turned and built two houses this direction. But.
I'll go back to that in a minute.
Sure.
Table that for a second.
Sure.
Because there's an answer for that. What if, after what Alan's saying, we leave as is, but we add into the thing similar to what you said about Matt or whatever, about kind of providing calculations upfront, the applicant to provide study of existing adjacent buildings for review by the planning commissioner, something like that. Because then you get the kind of bigger context to study, there's a more deliberate conversation of.
Yeah, I mean, they are required to do an elevation. So, and if we could expand that to just say an elevation.
Well, the elevation, they only, they only need to do an elevation if it's in the HO district. They don't need to do an elevation if it's, if it's by right, no, there's no elevation required.
Just a, a building mass to understand height.
Yeah, I mean, I don't even think they even needed to completely demonstrate that it meets the height because it like.
Well, that's what we added to the height was we wanted that preliminary hassle work.
Yeah, but I mean, maybe there, we, we require that, I'll kind of leave it to you to do the. I'm sorry, but I mean, we, we, but I mean, I think maybe, maybe that's a thing.
We'll sure to up and get it.
One, one line that's added that if adjacent setback is if there are competing adjacent setbacks or something like that, yeah, that, that the applicant needs to provide a a study or a documentation to explain why they picked one over the other or whatever, you know? So that gives them the opportunity to.
I like a sketch.
Kind of great, or yeah, it could be a sketch, you know, via sketch or.
But I think it would also help if the elevation just underneath it was the sketch profile of that front line.
Yeah.
If we could understand what that does. So with an elevation with the front line underneath it. So maybe we, I'll work on an example for that and then maybe it'll be easier if we can demonstrate what we're looking for. But I think we need to figure out when these projects come in, whoever's sorting and saying where this is going, is it good for just a building permit? Or this is, you've just triggered that.
Well, and it also goes back to the whole thing that I've mentioned before too about, you know, breaking up these hot button items and voting on them separately.
Sure.
For each application, so that, that each one of these things, so that, so build-to line becomes a, an individual thing that it's like, do we all agree with the build-to line? Yes or no? Do we all agree with the, with the height, yes or no?
We're still just making recommendations either way.
Yeah, but at least it's, but at least it's something that's more, it gives an opportunity for somebody like Tom when, for Burger King when he, or wasn't, who was the other one? Mitch's Gym for the, for the right-of-way, he didn't want to give the waiver.
Yeah.
Which kind of created a whole, like, thing, the applicant was like, oh, wait a minute, you know, like what are we?
But I agree with Tom West, which was, we were trying to preserve those, the right-of-ways and not reduce those at all. And that's why on the Burger King one on the north side, they didn't want to reduce it because what happens when the applicant across the street redevelops his property? When he realizes those one-story buildings can be five or four or three, whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Because then they're gonna want that same relief and then that, that would be a, be a problem. Well.
I'm not, yeah.
I'm gonna go ahead and say, Tom, we're not gonna have clear direction on you with this. I'm taking it back to the work session and we're gonna, so you're gonna miss out on that, Jason. But your final opinion though was, you're sorry, I'm trying to get your motion in somewhere.
And I came in on the tail end of Burger King, but the, and I don't know whether this came into play, but the word adjacent, if it's separated by a street, it's not adjacent. So that might have to be addressed too.
Yeah.
Though on High Street, there, there's no, there's nothing adjacent.
Yeah, and the problem is, and we looked at Google Earth, I mean, Google Maps and we looked at, you have to go four or five blocks before you find the kind of street that we're even talking about. So it's inconsistent with the next couple of blocks.
Well, that's because that property doesn't belong in the town center.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
But that's that's tip sale.
Yeah, yeah. I I don't disagree so, but it's a.
So my only point is maybe that has to be at a minimum changed to. You match setbacks in the in the closest blocks or something.
I it's a, it's a really tough thing because. Like Tom West did, I don't know if you were here for that, but Tom West did a whole series of studies.
It was only three hundred feet each.
It was all, yeah, and it was all kind of mapped out and he had a logic to it, but it was, it was very complicated, so you're like, make it simpler. So I I don't know.
The more he.
I don't know what the answer is.
The more we drill down, the more complicated.
Cause everywhere, even if like I'm saying, just do as your setback, that still creates issues, cause then.
Well, I don't expect it, but Alan's saying, I'm saying is is um. It's a fair enough on the other side of it, but if I'm just thinking through the last uh. Those five or six buildings that we have just sitting there, ready to go into construction, each one of those, I don't care if it was the Rubenstein property. Each one of them had something that was way out of um compliance if you just stuck.
Yes.
Because it's not.
But even though the language is wrong, and I, Tom says it's wrong, it's wrong, I understand, it was effective. Because we were able to get the building cut back to that point. If we, if we could, if we could use better language, then let's make the change, I'd say, you know, but. It's a.
Yeah, it did help in that case.
Yeah.
So it's, you're gonna table it.
I'm gonna table that and put that to work.
I'm making, I'm making, I'm minuting.
Oh, I appreciate it.
But you're gonna get a very, you're gonna get a very.
You commit as a.
Um, if I may, go back to the the.
Sure.
Matlock Street.
Yes.
So I think before you were, probably right before you came on the planning commission, that. Project, that property came before us as a reverse subdivision to consolidate the three lots. And since it's one house, the house never came back to us for, so they wanted to consolidate.
Did they consolidate it?
Yeah, they consolidated those three lots into one, so that's how they built that prop.
They built two houses on it.
There's two houses?
They built two houses on it. One doesn't even face the street.
Oh, then it must be, then it must have been either, I'd have to go back and look, but either it. It was a consolidation of three to two. And then at that point, it's two.
But it gets, it gets muddier because.
Yeah.
Neither house, well, one house faces South Matlock. You can pull it up on uh.
No, yeah.
Google Maps, because if you go back to the date, uh, a date. In his upper left hand corner of the screen, you could look at three views and dates. You can look at the original house and you go, that was nice. And then that that went away and then so go to uh Google Maps and.
It was just an abandon.
It was, no, I know where it is.
Terribly.
I know exactly what I mean when I saw the email.
Yeah, and then if you look at Chesco Views, it was actually a right of way plus two small parcels. And then the right of way is built on in the two small parcels.
Yeah.
Here. Yeah, there's one, one down. Yeah, it's here, so.
You can see it being built, the two buildings.
Yeah.
Connected.
Yeah. So it's been around.
So this was the lot.
Yeah, but go, get out of the alley and onto the street, it'll give the house there, it'll put the house.
Yeah, 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 but I mean, that was, that was the lot, so there was kind of like a little parking thing there.
Right.
And it was because it was basically three lots.
When, yeah. Go back up there and go across and then see that date, see more dates.
Yeah.
You go back up to that.
Yeah.
And then if you go back to where the old house was in there. Keep going further back.
Yeah, but it's, it was gone.
No, it's it's there and there, there it is.
Yeah, but I mean, it's gone, it was gone, yeah, but like that was an empty lot when they came, it wasn't like they said we're gonna demolish this house. So, and I don't know exactly how that was even there, cause it's three lots, so it must have been, you know, who knows.
Right, well, what I'm saying is, is there was two parcels, but somebody should have cleaned up the lot, the parcels. And then what happened is, when you see the new build, there's two parking spots off the alley to the west of the building. One of the buildings faces the parking spot, and so it's not facing me, I would have preferred if it faced the alley. But the front of the house is facing the side yard and the, and then there's.
Brick on the portico, which is awesome, and they face.
Yeah, I I, that's a good question, cause I, from, this is just my recollection, it was three sliver lots.
Right.
And they consolidated them, and in my mind, when I saw your email, it was, we consolidated one lot and there was, cause I was like, what are you talking about, two alleys?
It's 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 a twin.
But I'm not.
So see the parking spots, see the parking.
Yeah.
Left?
Yeah.
There's two, yes. They provided two parking spots to the west of that building, so the the unit on the east must have access. So it must be some type of a condo, but we never saw.
At the same time, there's, there should be four spots. There's.
Correct, correct. So mine is, is there was all sorts of stuff I was looking at going, I don't even know how this happened, uh, who reviewed it, but it didn't. Wasn't uh.
Yeah.
Anything I remember seeing, so. But it's there.
Yeah.
And I'm, and I'm not opposed at all about the two units, so it was just a.
Yeah, I mean, they're definitely not.
They're opposite.
Well, they're opposite, they're back, they're back.
So the one, yeah, one front is here and the other front is here.
Correct.
Which is weird.
Which is weird, and then there's no windows on the north side, no windows on the building on the north side. Um, and so it's. I don't know, my only point, there's five fifty each side, so it's one point one million dollars worth of construction there. They're two bedrooms.
Come to you because it's just a building. But once the lots were consolidated, it was.
So is it anything over two units or is it more than?
I don't know, that's why I was, that's why I asked the question, like what's.
I think planning commission, planning commission is something about two. I don't know if it's more than two units or two or more units. So if it's more than two units, they could do the two and they don't come to us. It's just the building administrative.
Okay.
Yeah, they snuck, might have snuck two giant houses. But not, not giant.
They're two bedroom.
Is that all they are?
And the one bedroom is a lot, it's not even.
I mean, I've seen it, I go past.
They didn't sell them yet, though.
I hope they do, I live around the corner.
Yep, okay.
It's crazy.
They took forever to build them too.
Okay, um, so we are on. Rec space and fee in lieu, I did talk to Tom, I think you talked to the other Tom.
Yeah.
But I think uh. In summary, uh, Tom has the, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're not, shouldn't do anything until that comprehensive park and rec. Plan is complete. Is that?
That's, that's my recommendation or the office's recommendation, because in order to, hopefully, there's something in that plan. About how the rec fee, the fee in lieu should be calculated. In other words, that fee in lieu has to have some rational basis. And, you know, I think the American Planning Association and maybe some other, you probably know better than I do, I'm sure you do. There's, there are all kinds of studies about how much recreation space should be in a borough and in the township. How much should be active and how much should be passive and um, I don't know, because I haven't interacted with the. The rec plan preparer, but hopefully there's guidance in there. How much additional parkland we need, how much different active recreational space we need and what the fee should be. So uh, I think we've told you before that we can require the fee. It has to be done by agreement. And sometimes the amount of rec space or. Or open space that they might provide provides incentive, incentive to pay the fee instead. It's, but I think you have a difficult decision. It's not like, I mean, it's, it's a lot easier in a township that's open and.
Sure.
Lot of ground.
Here it's much more difficult.
And Alan, do you wanna talk?
No, I, I, I just wanted to thank Tom for the work that he did on this, because I I think, you know, we were sort of wrestling with the. Public, private and and the images that are in the currently and. Uh, our ordinance and feeling as though they are not appropriate, not accurate and uh. I, if I follow your narrative, essentially. Rec space is open space, it just has to be accessible to the residents. And it can be private if there is a special agreement between. The municipality and the applicant, right?
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, we we were really just struggling with it, just a couple of non-lawyers here trying to figure out what this all.
Practicing that.
This all, practicing law, yes, I, business law one O one, you know, but uh, it's a long time ago. So uh, I I thought that was very helpful that we have that and I think perhaps. Maybe when we're doing all of this, uh, we should pass that with the Mand Borough Council so that they. Can understand, you know, what's, what's at stake and what um. Okay, so.
So I, well, I think, I think from my understanding, Alan, is we're gonna wait, the park and rec plan comes out and then we'll bring the subject back up.
That's fine, so what I, what I did, just trying to get a better, make sure that I touched all bases was, I I called um. Tom Comida, just, cause he's the one who came to us, there, four or five years ago, something like that, I think. We did an expansion of fee in lieu. Uh, I think it was to go to other. It was in NC one and NC two, but we're expanding it and I can't remember exactly what. And and I may have that wrong, but Tom came to us and gave us. A lecture on fee in lieu, how the history, how it came about, what the purpose was, and it was. Very informative and really stuck with me, so that's why I was kind of struggling with this whole private, public thing. But um, you know, he did, went through the whole impact fees in Pennsylvania nineteen eighty eight, you know, there were municipalities who were. Wanting money to buy new fire trucks and things like that, and that's when the state finally said, okay, you can, you can uh require. Fee in lieu for transportation and for parks and recreation, but that's it, you know, and um, so. That's all, uh, I just wanna make sure that when we get this, so he sent me. I think he'd already done the work, cause I mean, I called him and ten minutes later, I had that document in my, I sent it to you. His proposal as to how this should be dealt with, it was essentially to rewrite all the entire um. Design standards, uh, so uh, at some point, we may wanna take another look at that. And consider whether or not we think that's an appropriate course of action. To me, it did sort of clarify it, and it allowed for this whole. Public, private differential to uh, to happen, but um, we don't need to act on it. Is this the imminent, you think, or?
I I don't know the answer.
We don't know the answer, okay.
I I I wouldn't say imminent. I think it's in its.
Sounds very.
Final throes.
Well, I mean, we're in a spot where, you know, we just don't know, the next meeting, somebody could be proposing. You know, Yankee Stadium right over there and what do we? Are we protected in terms of this, cause this actually has been a, very much of a sticking.
That's rec space.
And and I think not necessarily handled in a way that particularly. Professional, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Well, I think, I would say it's a very confusing section of the municipality planning code. And a lot, many municipalities have these requirements. And some of them will give credit for trails, there are all kinds of permitate, permitate, yeah, variations on the fee. So, but as I said, a borough is different than. A municipality has a trail system and and more open space, so. Where you can, where you have a site where the developer can provide the open space on the property. And still develop the property.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I think we have to think outside the box, not to be trained, but.
Yeah. Well, we're right behind you.
So I mean, initially, when we first put this in front of Tom, he said, you just, you have to take. Um, ninety seven A nineteen nineteen and change two words and it it'll all make sense. Because the picture of the pool at uh, you know, this. My next story here identifies it as public. In no way could possibly be, really genuinely be considered public, so I wonder if we might wanna just consider. Fixing those two words in 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 this and then when. The whole uh, rec thing is figured out, maybe then take a much broader look at this. I mean, I could scare up the Tom's original recommendation circular to everybody if you'd like.
That would be helpful.
Huh?
That would be helpful.
Okay, I'll do that, if you're okay with it.
I'm okay with it. I'm gonna tell you that uh, I don't know what it was, a year ago, half a year ago, Tom rewrote the. Tom and Aaron re-edited that whole section. I mean, that's what we had taken to Borough Council and then that's when it came to a screeching hall. Relative to legality of it, because.
Is that what I sent you? Is it the same thing I sent you?
Yeah, but but there's a whole, the whole section was revised, he went through and marked up. And this was, you were, we, you have a copy somewhere if you're thinking through your emails, but that was maybe a, close to a year ago now.
Okay.
But it was in one, early on, when we tried to step through these four.
Okay.
I think I was taking on rec's uh, uh, rec fee and working with Tom, that was put forward. And then that was when those whole discussions happened and uh, and I think because Tom.
Uh, proposed an amendment that required the fee and we said you can't do that.
Well, that was, I think that was my ask, but yeah.
Yeah.
So that's fair enough that they said no, but the uh, um, I think then though, as we were parsing different pieces. The reality of it is, in the borough with these developments, the most common area that continues to come into question. Is the rooftop courtyards. And then it's a matter of whether or not that's accepted as rec space or not, so. And then it was whether that needed to be able to be dedicated as public or. Or whether they could just keep it for their inhabitants, so that was where it got into, that's when it started going out into those uh. More difficult uh. Uh, probably lawyer discussion level, this, this discussions have to happen, so.
Understood.
Okay, so I, we can dig that back out and get that to you. So on that one, well, well, I'll close that one out. Alan is, we're gonna hold this until the park and rec. Uh, cop plane comes out, you're gonna forward that information.
We're gonna forward the short fix to everybody and see how they feel about it.
And then we can discuss that at the work session next month.
Great.
Alright. Okay, preservation ordinance, Thomas is not here today, but he is working on it.
I moved, we adopted the whole thing.
Would would be, it would be a shame if he missed that. I'll be moving forward with that.
Yeah.
Uh, I like the whole idea, I like an overlay district in the opposite direction that allows uh. Rather than just allows height, allows us to uh, look at the other side uh, and allow maybe a. Uh, a lesser option, so uh, I'm, look forward to seeing how that turns out. Are there any other issues relative to those uh?
Original four that we have.
Okay. Okay, so the new business we had was seven hundred South High Street, which is West Chester University's master plan reports. Uh, again, go through it, looked at the general, it really is just, it's an overview. And it's comments right in those reports that basically says individual co- uh, individual projects. As they come up will be submitted for land developer review, so it's really, uh, I'm not sure. We can respond anymore than at the same level they presented it, which they gave kind of an overview, we can almost respond in like a big overview, which is. We appreciate being included, I think this looks straight, it's nice to understand what could be coming. I think this looks straight. It's nice to understand what could be coming and we expect to see these things as, as each project comes up. I did think there were some individual notes that Tom Comida had come up with, which were a little more, which was specific to street trees, perimeters. I think there were some trees cut down, down there, Schmidt, down at Rosedale and New. There were some trees and stuff removed. I don't know what was happening there.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, but so, I mean, I sent Ramsey, I think she's a little bit under the weather, but I sent her an email and asked her what the timeline was and did not hear back from her. So I guess we'll just move that again to next month and.
I think we have to act next month from the deadlines that I've been hearing. And so there was rumor that there was going to be a presentation by the university here, Borough Council at the, I don't know where or when, but if Ramsey could sort of dig around and find, find, get more information on that, I think that would be helpful.
I remember Sean Metrick had mentioned it in one of the meetings that there might be something, so if we get in.
Yeah.
If we get.
I think that would be really helpful if we could.
Sure.
Hear it from them directly.
And again, even the same thing, just to present that overview, but I do think, you know, thinking through all the different comments, it's really, the two big ones I had all had to do with when the students were crossing Rosedale in the center of the block. That's a whole different problem and what, if anything, were they gonna study the intersection of Rosedale and High? Because they both seem to be the, probably the biggest conflict of, and which worries me because a lot of people come down High aren't necessarily people that live in the borough, but maybe somebody that's cutting through.
Yeah.
So it's, it's that kind of an understanding. Both of those have a high contact rate between students and the borough. So I just want to make sure that they look at that and if there's anything they can do to help ease those intersections would be fair enough.
So this is just an interesting side for that part, that corner. That corner has been studied and discussed over the years and because of the two, it's township, borough, university. It's always been kind of a tricky thing, major intersection. And it's been an interesting thing to even deal with that. But I just recently was at St. Joe's University, it just made me think that, so St. Joe's did a whole underpass over City Avenue, which is interesting because I know I was there a couple of years ago. I know there was construction going on, but I didn't quite understand that's what, that's what they were doing. So I was there and I was like, oh, wow, it's done and it's amazing. No, but Villanova has an overpass over Langsyr Avenue, which I think is just interesting. So these two similar schools, the way they handle it is one goes over. Villanova's topography kind of makes that make sense.
Sure.
But St. Joe's goes under and that also kind of makes sense because of the way it is. But, but. But so there was a discussion for the intersection there, High and Rosedale to go over, but that creates a whole host of problems people have for against it, whatever. But then I just thought, well, if you went under, you know, but that's a whole nother host of problems too, because you have to shut down the whole intersection for.
Well, it's even which, even which corner they're crossing on. So if they're on the south side of it, it reduces people making, coming down. Because really, people coming south, going south on High, trying to make the left on the Rosedale runs into it students crossing from.
It should go from the fountain to EU Bull Center.
Right.
Over or under.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the one way and all pedestrian traffic gets funneled. Now, the problem is that crossing High Street is still an issue because.
But I think if they cross on the south side and then came over up north on the west side, it would get rid of the people that.
It was just the two, two strategies, but it's only going over one street. This is intersection based.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I think that's interesting that they had, both of them were there, but.
Yeah.
So like, that's not the only one that, that's around the concern and it's really for the safety of the students that sometimes are focused on other things. So anyway, so we'll table that to July and then, but if, but if there is something more specific that we want to add, I think at that working session, let's go ahead and put together the motion with any specifics. Because I think there is, there's more good than bad. I really do appreciate.
Definitely.
And there was a lot of work put in that thing and I think there's some very interesting and nice things coming for them in the next 15 years, 15, 20 years, so.
Plus they have an agreement. This is a huge thing and they put so much work into it and they really all, involve two townships.
I would have, you know, I would have, I would have liked to have that kind of executive summary presentation. Somebody walking through the plan and saying, this is your five, five to 10, 10 to 15 and so on, this is the future stuff. Really important to the borough is housing, parking, traffic, so these things to impact. And then there were, were interesting things within their traffic studies, like how the vacancy rate on the Sharpless and the Neils garages. But personally, like I said, like I said it last week was, they charge money for those. So if I was a student, I'd be at the free lot, walking, careful walking two miles, not paying a dollar.
I'm wondering if specifically request and if that's supposed to just hang out, wait them off.
Well, yeah, and then, and as much as we like seeing Brian Nagel, I would like to hear from the university.
Yeah, I think Borough Council's been, it's been presented to them. Either, you know, so our deadline is one month before Borough Council.
It's gonna be gone, it's definitely a little bit, but he's seen.
Yeah, so I think our thought process was, well, if they could push to get a presentation for a council, we'll, we'll come sit in, you know.
Yeah, but there's gonna be a recommendation before the briefing that seemed to make sense.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 the request is for conditional use and then a recommendation for that. So it's, and again, when you're, it's such a broad, big picture overview that not even sure what you're actually, none of them are actually proposed as real yet, so it's.
Yeah.
What's attached.
But they're asking you for a recommendation.
Sure, well.
Well, we kind of have to give it, but the university historically has always been kind of like this. They're like, we have to do this, but we're not doing anything more than we need to. We spent millions of dollars on this report, read the report, you know? I mean, if you do read through, even if you skim the report, it's pretty clear what they're doing. I mean, they don't.
Yeah, and then you could kind of see it if you followed through the pieces.
Be nice to have somebody to ask questions, but it's such a, like you said, it's such a broad comprehensive thing that nothing's, none of it's necessarily gonna happen in this plan.
It's just a potential, and I think it's in their best interest because some of the pieces, and I'll just use closing down Church Street as that example. Starts more rumors and more negative than really, they would, I think they would do themselves a favor by actually having the conversation. Because there's a lot that makes sense if internal to the new campus. If you go on that campus with 17,000 students and they're head in the phone or wandering around just having conversations, there's no reason to go down the street unless you're involved in on campus, none. There's food trucks along there, there's a couple of parking spots. They're proposing to come down and put a cul-de-sac in front of the new parking garage across from Mitchell Hall, just short of the People's Building, which is where the police station is. There's a couple of dorms on the west side. So when you look at where the buses or the turnarounds or cabs or Ubers or whatever it might be goes in, it's deep enough. When you go across from Schmucker and some of the older buildings, there's, there's really students and they kind of dart out from between those food trucks and the only, the only questions I have is, university comes into that and that's what happens. So that's a one-way in, so that's gonna have to be. So, and I did like your comment about the no turn on red, but I was thinking, maybe that's a, that might be more of a borough question.
If that's a borough, I just wanted to get.
But I really liked it.
Being recorded, so I'll mention.
I enjoyed it a lot.
Yeah. No, it's not good.
Is there analysis, an analysis of what the impact is going to be in High and New if Church is closed?
Right.
Because I think Tom Comida sat here and said, he thinks it's a bad idea.
Sure, sure. And I think, I think there was a discussion, I heard Bernie Flynn say at one time, there was a million dollar check on the table and they didn't take it. So mine is, and that's what I'm saying, what is that? Is that being purchased from the township? Is it being leased from the township? I mean, I don't understand what's going on. It's gonna be, remain a paper road? Is it gonna? There's not a lot of traffic, but whatever is there is gonna be pushed out, so I don't disagree with that. At the same time, both High and New are, are more significant streets, more significant roadways and both two-way, right?
I was gonna say, even the buses that shuttle back and forth from South Campus to North Campus, I think they will now double back and forth up and down New Street rather than.
Yeah.
It's just. Making more of a roundabout.
Or they, you know, they go out to High because they already turned on Sharpless.
Yes.
Instead of going down Church, they would just go around the big way in.
But then there were other.
So there, what I think there was, to answer your question, I think there were references to
Traffic.
Another study being done to this point, but this is what we're dealing with. There's a rumor they're gonna do a presentation, there's a rumor they're gonna do another study, but this is all we really know.
Yeah, understood. I mean, my understanding is they were going to come here and make a presentation, but I, and I think they extended the time for the hearing before council, knowing that they needed more time.
Okay.
But, yeah, I, I sort of incredulously is expecting to make a recommendation with no presentation, but stranger things happen.
That's right.
I guess we were to ask.
We thought, we thought they were.
Yeah, we've asked at.
I feel like the last four meetings.
Yeah, at each of the last four meetings, we've made it clear that we have.
Didn't make actual.
Or Ramsey was chasing that down. Now, that being said, there were a couple of other pieces there, which had to do with the zoning of the campus. There's a, there's a corner on just below Sharpless and High that they were kind of identifying, the campus was identifying as a potential purchase to the super block. At the same time, there's already a lot of properties outside of the PUC, that out of that zoning district that is campus related. So I didn't know if, how that goes.
That are referred to in the study when they theoretically this was.
Well, if you look on the east side of High Street, like I'll just use the bookstore as an example. There's a couple of properties there that are, and if you go down Rosedale, a couple of properties there that are used presently as labs and classroom buildings and libraries and stuff like that, but they're not within the zoning district, which I wasn't sure whether that's something we should comment on or not, or should that be zoned.
I think we should note it in the observations and what we pass along to.
Because I think it's fair enough. I mean, it's, because I don't want to say project creep, when there's campus creep goes kind of spreading out there, all of a sudden you find yourself in a different zoning district under different requirements.
Yeah, I mean, I think what you have, the way you could look at this is, thank you, university, you didn't need to tell us what your plans were outside the PUC and our judgment, our recommendation were make only applies to PUC. So those were not passing on those things that are outside.
The existing, existing properties.
Yeah, so that's a whole nother conversation. You want to talk about what you're doing in east of High Street? Fine, it says nothing, this wasn't approved in the conditional use of the, you understand what I'm saying?
Not quite, but I do understand.
I mean, all we're approving really is the conditional use, I mean, recommending approval and then calling out anything.
Correct.
Else, but they, in the plan, they chose to speak to things outside the PUC. Okay, but that's just additional information to us. When we recommend approval, we're not recommending approval for things outside. I think we should limit our approval to things within the PUC.
Yeah, I was limiting our approval just on what they submitted. They did not submit stuff on the outside. So what I was asking for was outside of that.
I think they did. Yeah, those buildings, they talked to those.
Oh, sure, but what I was saying was, should, should the borough or the planning commission, we don't have a planner,
Yeah.
should we consider having that zoned PUC?
Oh.
Because they've owned.
I'm sure they'd love it.
They've owned and occupied and used those buildings. Now, when work happens in those, it goes up to the state, doesn't go into the borough. All right, so to Harrisburg for review, down in Pennsylvania, all that.
Yeah.
State, state, all the, all the work on the university goes up to Harrisburg for a review for.
Sure.
Life safety accessibility. Reality of it is, it exists on, in the borough. It's not in the PUC. Is that, or is that not something we should clean up and say, hey, if these things are here, then we should zone, I don't know if that's something we do, and every time they acquire a property, if the potential is there that they want to add that, does that become part of the PUC?
Yeah.
Right? Because, and I'm just asking, because I'm just saying, there's multiple buildings, I'm saying they're sitting outside of the PUC, but the PUC is specifically there for the university and then university campus, a planned university campus. So when I'm looking at that.
What is the, how do surrounding townships that have like an office, west, west Chester purchase?
That's, I think that's, that's the point is that we tend to look at this as just another zoning district and it really isn't because of the impact of the university, because it goes into other municipalities and it got proposed in 2017 and I think approved in 2021 or something like that. Took five years to get coordinated with the other municipalities. I'm not sure we have. We're opening up, we might be opening up.
Well, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
And I think Alan's correct. I mean, the conditional use is for the master plan in the PUC. That's obvious. Period. So if the university, the university wants to in the future propose that some properties be rezoned PUC, that's up to the university. And there may be reasons why you don't want that.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
You got mission creep, I guess.
Yeah.
There may be reasons you don't want the PUC to expand.
Sure. And what mine was, I thought it would be worth the ask and the conversation because I don't know that anybody's really looked at or anybody's really looking at it. But I was saying is, the bookstore and some of these pieces have been acquired, Jake's whatever place on the corner. And it's just kind of expanded the campus at the same time it really hasn't. Or should it? That was the only question, that maybe should the borough look at that and then understand that when people are talking about.
Did the university buy that building or is it like so affiliated?
Well, they have a couple even down on Rosedale, that's the labs for the, for the horse stuff. So they have a couple of buildings that they've been using for a long time, but it's not within that. So I don't know even if your spot zone knows just to make sure it's included in their.
Yeah, because like Thomas said, I was thinking, you don't necessarily want.
Right, to be giving the university property.
Sure. You know, but you don't want to, you don't want to necessarily.
I know it was a separate subject from the master plan. So mine was, the master plan, I thought that was fairly straightforward. It's so broad, no review, it's that.
Yeah.
But my question was, while, while it brought some attention to that area, we're noting all these other bits and pieces. We noted one of them, which is, hey, maybe we can, they've identified a potential expansion, perhaps be in the block to create their super block, right? And mine is, does that mean it's staying those houses? It mean they're planning on tearing those down? Well, what are they, what's that thought there and might impact that? And the same thing when they're saying, let's grab that road. What is that? What's the impact? So these all have financial and, and impact. So mine is, I get that they're making these decisions, but nobody on the borough is pushing back from the borough side. I mean, we're reviewing it, but who we don't have, I don't know if anybody's looking at, hey, you've already occupied these. So all I was just saying was, it's a separate issue. Should we look at those other pieces of properties and say, should they still be part of NC? Should they be part of PUC? And then what's that? What is that? That's all. So that, I don't know, I don't know where that boundary happens and when it happened, but they've expanded outside of it. So, so that's just a separate, it's a separate piece, but, okay, well, I'll be on my own weapon. The, the, the last one is, the last one is a giant, huge thank you to Jason Pearl and all your years of volunteering and work and efforts and opinions and professional guidance, everything good that you've done and none of the bad stuff. All the positive stuff, so I just want to say thank you very much for myself and I'm sure everybody else would want to say something, but I do very much appreciate all the thought-provoking conversations and, and guidance and, and then building to see through and get to go clean bottom lines. and, uh, and then building to see through and get to go clean bottom lines. It, I very much appreciate and enjoyed, uh, working with you on here. So hopefully.
Thank you.
We're never gonna match you, but maybe your son. Be a pro.
I'll see. Yeah, I, I just add my, uh, two cents there to say tremendous contribution to our efforts here. Uh, it brought tremendous insight and, uh, your guidance has been invaluable and to have a, an architect of your stature, working with us all this time, uh, just been a real honor. And we wish you well in your new responsibilities and, uh, we will miss you.
Thank you. Don't forget us, little B.
Thank you.
Alex, you must thank me. I know we only worked together for a short time, but I second everything that is said and your keyboard skills are second to none. Where do I have us behind that mouse? I think you have to find your.
Yeah. I, I was on the planning commission for once in, uh, four or five years, like two thousand to two thousand and five. And then, uh, right in the middle of that, we, my wife and I had kids, we had the twins. So she was like, please do not.
Yeah.
It's like that ended that. And then, um, and then just currently here. So it was like twenty twenty-one, I actually went back to the day trying to find out when I started, like during COVID. So it was like, it was, there was a few meetings where they were online.
Yeah.
For me.
Yeah.
You guys were online for a little while and then, and then we came back here. So I don't know how long it's been, four or five years.
Yeah, but you've done it for eight, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've done it eight at least. Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah. And if it didn't come up, I'd love to keep doing it, but Senator committed or, uh, Michael Hartman, Chief of Staff kind of said, you know, we'll put your name for it. If you want to go in there, it would look good, you know, you should do it. So I didn't. Yeah.
West.
Yeah, yeah, no, it was, it was kind of requested, you know, kind of suggested. So I was like, sure, why not? You know, and that was months ago. I was like, oh, nevermind.
Never win anything.
I'll never see anything about it. You know, there's other people in the state that probably won it or have already talked about trying to get on. So I was like, I'm, I'm not gonna see anything about that again, but then.
Well, congratulations.
Well, yeah, yeah, I was like, wow, okay. Yeah, so.
And it was a treat.
So, and yeah, and it's been a pleasure. I mean, I just feel like personally, everybody should be involved in some way, you know? So it's like some people with their little league or whatever, everybody should be involved some way in their community. I just feel like with my, you know, education and experience, this is perfect. So.
And your little house.
Yeah, it was a, it was a pleasure. Yeah, if I, if I could help, that was great.
Where are you going?
Oh, um, I don't even know. No, no, the, uh, Pennsylvania Architects, Pennsylvania Architects License their board. A member of that.
Don't be tight.
Yeah.
Big time.
Yeah, I gotta, so I gotta go Harrisburg every month or every month or something.
Fantastic.
Once a month.
I think they're every other month, but I'm still trying, I was reading through minutes, still trying to understand the frequency and how much. So.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll, uh, adjourn the meeting in a second.
Second.
There you go.
All right.
Thank you, Jason. I think we just hit stop on that and it will stop sharing.
Right there, lower left.
So.
Wait.
On the group, but there's an orange.
Right here.
Yep. And then hit exit. Thanks.